...opportunity to go to a thing called the Bathyscap. I didn't.
Good afternoon, everybody. I'm calling the regular meeting of the Planning Commission to order for Thursday, July 11, 2019. Ms. Rydel, would you take role, please?
Thank you, Chair Wiscom. Chair Wiscom?
Here.
Vice Chair Jordan?
Here.
Commissioner Campanella?
Here.
Commissioner Higgins? Absent. Commissioner Lodge?
Here.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Here.
Commissioner Thompson? Absent. Commissioners Higgins and Thompson are absent. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rydel. Okay, we're going to move on to item number two, preliminary matters, 2A, requests for continuances, withdrawals, postponements, or addition of ex-agenda items. Mr. Busk?
Madam Chair, we have none.
Okay, and how about B, announcements and appeals?
No announcements or appeals.
That's good news. Thank you very much. Okay, item 2C is review, consideration, and action on the following draft Planning Commission minutes and resolutions. We have the minutes from our regular meeting on June 20, 2019, and the Planning Commission Resolution 009-19, which is the updated coastal land use plan. Anyone have any concerns or amendments to the documents? Okay?
I'll move approval of both.
Okay. Okay. Moved by Commissioner Jordan, seconded by Commissioner Schwartz. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? No abstentions? Thank you very much. That carries unanimously. Okay, we're on to item 2D, comments from members of the public pertaining to items not on this agenda. And seeing no one here to speak on items not on the agenda, I will close public comment, general public comment, and we'll move on to item number 3A, which is a discussion item, five-year review and discussion of existing uses in the harbor and shoreline areas of the City of Santa Barbara's Harbor Commercial HC Zone. Ms. Busk, thank you.
Thank you. Brian Bossy, the waterfront business manager will give the staff report.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and Commissioners. As Allison said, my name is Brian Bossy, and I'm with the city's waterfront department. I'm the business manager down there, and I am back after a five-year hiatus from the Planning Commission with our five-year review of the Harbor Commercial Zone. This is a brief presentation outline. We're going to be running through the municipal code, not the whole municipal code, just this particular section, and then we'll work our way through a number of waterfront-related issues all the way down to our business activity permit program. So first off, the municipal code is geared, in this particular sense, to making sure that the waterfront and the harbor remain a working harbor. Every five years, we are required to review the extent and nature of the existing uses in the Harbor Commercial Zone, and then we're required to present that review to our Harbor Commission, which we did back in May, and then we come here to the Planning Commission and talk to you about that. And finally, a copy of the report is sent off to the California Coastal Commission. So as far as the Harbor Commercial Zone, where is that? What does it include? You can see from this chart, it starts just over to the left of Harbor Way, I should say, to the west, and it encompasses the breakwater, all of Stern's Wharf, goes along Cabrillo, and then back into the harbor and back. So all the businesses within the harbor, as well as Stern's Wharf. The Harbor Master Plan, as well as the new local coastal plan program, I should say, has policies related to the harbor, and it, again, is geared towards making sure the harbor is a working harbor, and one of its key uses is as ocean-dependent. That's the primary. And then secondary to that are ocean-related activities and visitor-serving activities. And I'm going to go through each of these and how we look at those. So this is kind of a good activity for us. We're obviously down in the weeds quite a bit with our day-to-day work, and this allows us to take a step back and look at what we're doing down there. As far as ocean-dependent uses are concerned, again, these are the primary uses for the working harbor, and they range from anything from marine-related government facilities to boatyard repair facilities to services necessary for our commercial fishing fleet. Currently, we have 20 ocean-dependent uses. They occupy just under 16,000 square feet of interior space and over 176,000 square feet of exterior space. I should let you know that as I go through each of these, there are charts in the back of your staff report, the exhibits, that go into detail and list out all 20, et cetera. The only changes, as far as ocean-dependent uses are concerned, was a simple transfer, MSRC, which is the Marine Spill Response Corporation, took over for Clean Seas, so they just assumed ownership of that company. They are a not-for-profit U.S. Coast Guard classified oil spill response organization. They're an international company, so they bring a lot of resources to clean up oil spills if they were to happen in our area. Our ocean-related uses, again, these are secondary uses that also aid in ensuring the harbor remains a working harbor, but also help provide for a desirable environment for the public. We have 14 ocean-related uses going on in the harbor. These are leases, I should say, and they occupy an interior space of a little over 17,000 square feet, exterior space just under 1,300 square feet. And the only changes since the last time we were here are that Marine Services replaced Transpac Marine. Transpac Marine was an old marine shop that had been there for at least 40 years, kind of a legend down in the harbor, but they closed up shop, and through a request for proposal process, Marine Services was a successful lessee for that space. And they do marine repair as far as boats, engines, and things like that, special orders. Our visitor-serving uses, this is where our restaurants and souvenir shops and things like that come into play. We have 13 of those in the harbor area, occupy just under 21,000 square feet of interior space and just over 4,000 square feet of exterior space, and we have had no changes in that regard. As a whole, we are 100% occupied as far as our businesses are concerned. Our businesses tend to stay there for quite a long time. There's rarely turnover, as you can see from the last few slides. Separate from those uses is Stern's Wharf, and in 1980, the coastal development permit stated that the building area will be utilized predominantly for visitor-serving commercial uses, and that's exactly what we do out there. We have 16 businesses operating on Stern's Wharf. They occupy just under 33,000 square feet of interior space and just shy of 14,000 square feet of exterior space. There has been one change since the last time we saw you in 2014, and that is Conway Vineyard, which runs the deep-sea wine tasting, acquired the lease space next to them, which was coastal treasures. It was a souvenir shop, so they effectively expanded their deep-sea wine tasting room by about 610 square feet. So that's the only change that took place out on Stern's Wharf. A big part of a working harbor, at least our working harbor, our commercial fishing industry. Our most valuable catch continues to be sea urchin. The latest figures we have are from 2017, 2018 haven't been published yet, and our local fisheries took in 1.8 million pounds of urchin, about just shy of 500,000 pounds of rock crab, just shy of 300,000 pounds of sablefish, and then you kind of work your way down, short-spine thornyhead and lobster, another big one for us down at the harbor. The value of the fisheries, immediate value, is about $13 million. And then we did a study, we worked with UCSB about three years ago, and did a study on the overall economic impact of the fisheries, and that came back to be about $35 million. Once, you know, $13 million taken in, but then you spread it out over the trucking companies, the distribution companies, the restaurants, et cetera, et cetera, it ended up being about $35 million. So very important, not only to our local economy, but our regional economy as well. Our slip uses, we have four different marinas, creatively known as marinas 1, 2, 3, and 4, and we have 1,143 slips in the harbor. And 997 of those are used as recreational slips. We have approximately 100 live aboards. I think that's dropped a little. I think it's about 98 now. We also have between 60 and 82 slips reserved for commercial fishing, and that fluctuates depending on the fishing season. And then we also have 64 slips that are used for miscellaneous items, including visitors. We have a very active visitor population, people who are coming up and down the coast and stop in. We almost act as a hotel, if you will, for those kind of folks. So we supply some slips for them, yacht brokerage slips, and then slips for various federal agencies that come and go and maybe do some activities down in the harbor or in our area. We have a permitted mooring area, which is located east of the wharf, and this was started back in 2006. It's another way, if you don't want to be in the harbor, you can get a mooring permit and go out to our mooring area. That's one of the purposes. The other is to reduce the number of vessels that end up on east beach through storm activity or just breaking loose, and it's been quite successful at that. I think maybe we had one or two groundings last year, whereas it used to be 10, 12 a year. So that's significantly been reduced because of this program. As you can imagine, once those boats get on shore, a whole bunch of environmental havoc can happen. So again, it provides opportunity for individuals seeking mooring space in the city waters. Maybe they don't want to be too close to somebody else, so they moor up. We have 46 designated sites, and to date, so far, 16 of those are being occupied. Our west beach permits, we allow a maximum of 50 outrigger canoes, small sailboats, and/or rowing dories to be placed on west beach. If you're just placing them, as in this photo, just on the sand itself, they're $275 per vessel per year. We also have six racks that house, you can stack eight outriggers or other kayaks and canoes on those. Those generally are made available to the various outrigger clubs and such, and those go for $1,150 a year. And it's a nice, easy access point. You don't have to put it on top of your car, your house, doesn't have to take up extra space there. Keep it on the beach, you come down, and you're immediately adjacent to the quiet water area. And these permits are available the second Friday of March and for that whole year. Our cat beach, our catamaran beach permits, this is over towards Leadbetter. We provide a maximum of space for 65 owners to store their catamarans out on Leadbetter Beach, and those go for $200 per vessel. They're seasonal, so it's, I believe, the second Friday of April through Halloween. And I believe currently we have about 35 of those active. So it used to be full, and we've seen that shrink as people take up different sports, whether it be SUPs and things like that, or outrigger canoes on the other, over on west beach. Our business activity permit program, this was started back in 1972, and it continues to this day. It establishes rules and guidelines for individuals who have no fixed place of business or no lease space within the harbor, yet they're still needed down in the harbor. This can be everything from boat varnishers to boat cleaners to everything in between. And so these folks don't have necessarily bricks and mortar in the harbor. They might not even have a bricks and mortar outside of the harbor, but a lot of these folks work out of their cars and provide essential services to our various marinas. So what we do with these folks, it's to promote and offer these services in a safe and orderly manner, and so we require of them City of Santa Barbara business permit. We also require insurance, depending on what kind of activity they will be doing. So they're covered from an insurance basis, and then they're also issued an ID card. And this allows us to really be aware of what's going on out in the harbor and make sure everybody's got the appropriate types of insurance and things like that while they're working on these boats. Currently, we have about 68 business activity permits, and that fluctuates, varies between maybe one or two from that every year. Another issue down at the waterfront that people are aware of are cruise ships. They've been coming to Santa Barbara since 2002. They visit during our non-peak business seasons, and that generally runs between January and May, and then late September to mid-November. And we don't have them in the summertime. They, for the most part, are just during the day, so they come early in the morning, around 6:00 a.m., and they leave in the evening time. So very rarely do we allow them to stay for the evening. So they come in, people get off, and then they move out. They vary in size between 450 passengers, all the way up to 3,100 passengers. They've proven to be an important component of the local business economy, and they continue to receive strong support from the Santa Barbara Chamber, Visit Santa Barbara, as well as Downtown Santa Barbara. And we work with all these folks. We have a hospitality center as they get off at sea landing, where they can come, check in, find their tour. It's very organized, and we continue to get really good feedback from the passengers. They love coming here, even though it's just for the day. They like to come here, get off, do their thing, and then hop back on their boat. The idea being, hopefully, down the road, they're going to come back and stay for a little bit longer, visit our hotels and things like that. So that is a snapshot of some of the many things we do down at the waterfront department. We feel, the department feels, that our lease and slip management policies help to preserve the working harbor and that our current mix of uses ensures that Santa Barbara Harbor remains a working harbor. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Bossy. Do my fellow commissioners have questions? Yes, Commissioner Jordan, go ahead.
Thank you. Thanks, maybe more a question for staff, but so eventually this migrates to the new zoning ordinance, right? Once the Coastal Commission gets done with us?
Correct.
And then the zone you're talking about would be COH, right? And so kind of my generic question is, how would one get the ball rolling for situations where every time we're in what's now OM, right? Down off Garden in Salsapuatus, and we make a decision that something's not feasible and annoy all the fishing community and put a lumberyard in, for example? There just seems to be a disconnect between the tight connection between the zone we're talking about today and that zone, that there's no review on that zone that coincides with a review on this zone, and your zone is basically just parking lot and restaurants and stuff like that. But the real issues, the other real issues for the working harbor are often what's now called the OM zone. So is there a, I mean, obviously, we don't do it. It's not in the Muni Code, the OM zone review or keeping stats on that, but how, isn't there a need to get that ball rolling and actually kind of track whether it is, in fact, eroding as a manufacturing or a commercial use zone related to the ocean and keep a little better track on that rather than these one-off approvals every couple of years that do erode it?
Chair Wiscom and Commissioner Jordan, I think part of the difference with the OM1 zone is that it was a manufacturing zone that turned into the OM1 zone, and we haven't really seen OM1 uses go into it. So it's not a matter of keeping track of it to make sure it doesn't erode. It's that those uses haven't really established themselves too much in that zone yet.
Right. So it kind of flies beneath the horizon as it erodes away still, right? I mean, we've had, the city's had land down there, and they've decided to sell it rather than utilize it for specifically a ocean-dependent or a ocean-oriented use. And so I guess my point is, you know, one day, one day we're going to look up, and certainly the private land parcels that are down there will just be gone for what the contradiction was in that particular zone, that, you know, it should be used for this, but there's an out to let it be used for anything else you can justify. I guess, you know, it's just kind of a theoretical question, but when do we address that? Do we address that? Is there a proper way to address that, to start that consideration going? Would it be reasonable to do this type of five-year report for that zone also and have the guys who are worried about the services for a working harbor down in Mr. Bossy's zone also be worried about the dependent or related uses for a working harbor over in that zone, too?
Chair Wiscom and Commissioner Jordan, it would be a lot more difficult to do that because we don't control the leases.
Right.
Whereas in the harbor, they can keep track quite readily of what each leaseholder, what their use is. And in terms of losing OM1 uses or that zone, that is the purpose of the conditional use permit. For any time a use comes in that's not that ocean-related use, that is why it's a conditional use permit, which, you know, has pretty high standards in terms of meeting it. So that's the mechanism that allows it to be something else.
Yeah, but in the couple that I've seen that's 10 years, it's just, when you just, you run up against the catch-all of feasibility, and it's obviously the price of the land that's kicking it away, and I guess I'm just frustrated, maybe, I mean, I get that, and I don't have a problem making those findings, but I'm frustrated then that the city's not playing a greater role in aggressively or proactively resolving that to the benefit of the fishing community or support activities for the fishing community and just letting the private market basically knock off parcels one by one as they come up in that, the way the ordinance is written now. So I don't know. That's just, that's just really my only thought to that. It was not a pleasant experience to sit through that one at Salsapuatus and Yanonoli or whatever it was, and I had no problem getting, going down the path I went down to get to the end result, but I could duplicate that, I think, with any parcel down there doing the same thing, and the fishing community would have the same valid complaint. So, all right, I've talked too long about that. But I'd be interested in if there's a way that you would suggest that we raise that issue if people thought it was an issue, and where we would raise it to, if we would suggest to council or to the community development director to review that zone or review that part of the ordinance or the new zoning ordinance or review putting that into a report, something like that, just to elevate the issue rather than just let it lie there as it has been. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Jordan. Commissioner Lodge?
Thank you, Madam Chair. My recollection is that Clean Seas was financed or funded by the oil industry. Is that the case also with this new organization?
Madam Chair, Commissioner, yes, that is our understanding of MSRC. Again, they're Coast Guard Oil Spill Response Company. I'm not exactly sure how they are funded, but I can look into that. But you're right, Clean Seas was funded by companies doing oil activity in the local area.
Okay, I just wouldn't want to see any city taxpayer dollars going.
No, there are none. So they're actually paying us to have their vessel in the harbor, so.
Okay, good. It's noted here that the drop-off in urchin landings due primarily to environmental fluctuations that have depleted some island kelp stocks. Is this because of increasing water temperatures, or does anybody know?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Lodge, our operations manager, Mick Cronman, is a former longtime commercial fisherman, so he's our resident guru, but I do sponge a lot off of him in that regard, and that is, that's kind of the general understanding, is the warming of the waters has created problems for the urchin, and you can tell there's a whole lot less urchin harvesting coming in on a daily basis. Our offices are right next to the city pier, so in the afternoons, those folks are coming in, dropping off their catch, and it's gone down noticeably, yeah.
Ah, okay.
We're hoping it rebounds, but we'll see.
In the past, most or much of the catch went to Japan. Is that still the case, or is it being consumed in the U.S. these days?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Lodge, great question. It is starting to turn a little bit. A good deal of it does go to Japan. Suppliers will line up on a daily basis, take the catch, drive it down to LAX, and it'll go overseas. But we've seen a big push recently, especially with a lot of our local fishermen and fisherwomen, fisherpeople, pushing it more out into the local area. Our Saturday morning fisherman's market is starting to become more robust, and we're seeing a lot more activity there in the local area, and they're really pushing to get more of the local restaurants to have both urchin as well as other locally caught fish. And we're starting to see a change that way, which is good. There was, a long time ago, when it was about 90% of it went away, but I don't have a percentage, but it's gotten a lot better.
Okay, maybe some people don't know that there is that fisherman's market on Saturday morning. What are the hours for it?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Lodge, I would get there as early as you can. They're out there as early as 6:00 a.m., and they're usually done by about noon, and there's often quite a crowd when the sun's coming up, so.
They sell out?
I can speak from personal experience. My husband went down one morning, and he waited in line. He got there really early, and he waited in line, and the one in front of him took the last of the fish, so you do want to get there as early as possible.
Okay, well, people do know about it.
And it fluctuates. Yeah, well, I mean, we always want to get the word out, so the more the merrier, and it does fluctuate by what's in season as well.
Okay, all right. And I note that you have available one permit for a tomal on the beach. There used to be one on the beach, didn't there, or am I misremembering?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Lodge, there may have been one. I'm just not sure it had a permit, and that was a whole city council policy issue some time ago. So we do reserve one space for a tomal, and it's currently open, so if you have one, bring it on down, and we'll get you set up.
Okay. And then I was interested to see that there is no waiting list for live aboard permits. That's different from the way it used to be, isn't it? I seem to remember that you had a lot of people who wanted to live in what was sort of a low-rent district.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Lodge, it fluctuates. We're currently at about, I think the slide said 100, I think we're actually at 98, but we set aside, or up to 10% of the fleet can be live aboard, which would get us up to about 114. So it stays, it kind of goes back and forth. I think the last time we were here, it was significantly higher. But again, living on your boat isn't for everybody, so I think that's kind of why it comes and goes. But it's usually around that 100 mark.
Okay, and then I know you, under upcoming issues, this problem with people inappropriately using the parking lot, have you come up with ways to change that so far, or is this a work in progress?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Lodge, this is a work in progress. We had, the harbor has a very finite amount of parking spaces, but over time, people, although technically it is legal and within the parameters of the various ordinance that dictate what you can do with waterfront parking, they are storing their vehicles down there for the long term. And so we, on June 13, held the public workshop down at the waterfront. We got about 50, over 50 people participating in our workshop. I'll be reporting out briefly on that next week at our Harbor Commission, but our plan is to have a follow-up meeting of the Harbor Commission Parking Subcommittee on July 22, where we will be reviewing the June 13 meeting and then moving or proposing a number of -- of ordinance changes to address the abuses that have taken place down in the waterfront, including the storage of vehicles and oversized vehicles and things of that nature. So, it's a, it's a work in progress, but we're moving forward.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Lodge. Commissioner Schwartz.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Do you want questions and comments together?
I think just questions right now. Thank you.
Okay, great. So, I'll start on the first page of Scott Readman's memo, which is page fifteen of seventy-four in our packet. In reading this report, I was wondering, Mr. Bossi, do we have a policy that would provide for preferential lease consideration for local merchants, vendors, establishments? Either in this particular zone or, I don't know if Mr. Doymus wants to comment, citywide? I'm not aware of one, but perhaps you could help me understand that.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Schwartz, we do not have that in any of our policies. Our policies are more geared towards the ocean-dependent and that being our number one focus. If, if a space does become available, that's the first priority. We'll go out with a request for proposal process. It's a very public process. Again, doesn't happen real often because people stay where they're at, but we'll go through an RFP process and an ocean-dependent use will be scored higher in that particular category than other uses. We've talked about or had other similar questions regarding local preference. Mr. Doymus might be able to comment, but my understanding is that's not in anything the city currently has, at least, and that was my experience when we used, with the former redevelopment agency in State Street and all that, is that that wasn't in any of the policies of the city.
Okay, maybe, maybe I could ask Mr. Doymus, yes.
Chairperson Wiskom, Commissioner Schwartz, no, I agree with that. There's nothing in the policies as to that. So, with the process is exactly what Mr. Bossi said. We send out four RFPs. We do have a, you know, preference in terms of businesses that, you know, would use the coastal zone or a preference or a score scale, but there's nothing else to that outside of that.
Well, I was thinking about this because when I lived in San Francisco, the Board of Supervisors, you know, which is a, it's a chartered city county, so they passed an ordinance and it's been updated subsequently to not allow chains that have, I'm doing this from recollection, eleven or more outlets nationwide have additional presence in the city or county of San Francisco and indirectly that encourages local businesses, local merchants to apply or to seek opportunities by limiting the chains as defined under San Francisco's ordinance. I've been thinking a lot about local preference across all of our policies, whether it's housing, in this case, some of our vendor leases, merchant leases. And so, I think I'm going to follow up with staff as to what type of forum would be appropriate for me to further engage our decision-makers in the city, whether that's just individually speaking with council members or, or some other forum. It could even be start, we could start at a planning commission lunch meeting just to kick this around. But I think it's personally, I'll just say, I think it's high time that our city take a more serious work effort path to local preference in a number of areas. So, okay, let me keep going. Then on the next page, this is page sixteen of seventy-four in our packet, under item two B, tenant turnover is very low, overall positive working relationship and tenants are generally successful. I was wondering what the measurement is for this because a low vacancy rate doesn't necessarily equate to tenant satisfaction when there's limited inventory, kind of like what we're dealing with, with housing. So, can you comment on that, Mr. Bossi? Measurement for, for this success that you're referencing here?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Schwartz, we don't have a numerical device or something along those lines to measure success of our tenants. We work very closely with all our tenants. We work with them on marketing. We participate, we participate in the Sternsworth Business Association as well as the Harper Merchants Association. So, we're very tied into our merchants as far as if, if, how they're feeling. Are they, are they worried about the economy? How's their business going? And success is those folks continuing, in our, currently, again, this is all anecdotal, continuing to stay in their lease space, doing well, seeing their, their sales volume every year slowly increase or at least stay steady, especially in times of economic downfall. So, we use a lot of anecdotal evidence and, and take their word for it. How are you doing? How's everything going? Is there something we can do to help you? How, do we need to do some more marketing? And so, we do work with our tenants quite a bit. And if on the rare occasion that somebody is not successful and their business doesn't make it, which hasn't happened in the seven years I've been there and I can't recall it from talking with staff, that it's happened prior to that, I'm sure it has, we would, we would address that accordingly. But everybody's doing pretty well. We monitor their sales on it. They have to report their sales every month, so we're tied into what they're doing and how they're doing.
Okay, very good. Then on the next page, you mentioned Conway Vineyards and Deep Sea Wine Tasting Room, page seventeen of seventy-four in our packet. Here again, I'm just looking to be educated. Do we have a uniform ordinance in the city for alcohol-serving establishments in terms of hours, operational requirements? Just wondering if any part of our city has allowances that other neighborhoods or micro areas are not afforded? Or is it, do we just have citywide kind of a blanket provision instead of requirements? In this case, it'd be wine tasting.
Wine tasting.
No, open, yeah, alcohol serving.
Chairperson Wiskom, Commissioner Schwartz, we don't have in terms of a citywide ordinance with these designated times and everything. It's, it's, there are different sections for the downtown corridor, but a lot of that, we go through the alcohol beverage, ABC, in terms of the permitting, the hours, what's So, there's nothing in terms of that citywide policy about certain zones in the city, what hours they can have. That's really done basically through the ABC licensee program. And then with that, there's Fire and Police Commission, which has purview over dance permits in terms of, you know, what security is needed there for it to operate.
Okay.
So.
Okay, thank you. Then the next page, page nineteen of seventy-four. In reading about the beach permits, the outrigger canoes, small sailboats, rowing or et cetera, I was wondering how we advertise permits that are available, you know, sort of underutilized or not yet secured permits. What, what do we do there to try to optimize the number of permits that we have in, in play, Mr. Bossi?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Schwartz, oftentimes depending on the permit, we don't have to advertise because this is on people's agenda three hundred and sixty-four days out. For example, the West Beach permits, folks are lining up the night before and actually stand in line overnight just to make sure that they get their permits. As you, and as I noted, there are still a few left, but they want to make sure they get their racks situated with their club and all, all that kind of information. The other things such as Cat Beach, we do advertise on our website and post that and we, so we have that information available. Again, with Cat Beach, catamarans have kind of gone aside, not a lot of, it used to be, they would be packed. We would have sixty-five out there the day of, but now, like I said, we're at about thirty-five. So, that, that kind of whole industry has, has waned a little bit.
Kind of falling out of trendiness, as a speaker.
Yeah, yeah. I think people find it easier to lug a SUP down to the beach than a catamaran, so they're sticking with that.
Yes, I'm sure.
So, we do our best to advertise. I'm sure there's more we could do and, and we can look into that as far as social media and things like that to make sure people are aware.
Okay, just curious. On the next page, page twenty of seventy-four, under other harbor area uses, there's a discussion of businesses presently operating under business activity permits. For example, boat detailing, engine repair, underwater maintenance, varnishing, woodworking. I was wondering what our environmental requirements are for the proper use and waste disposal with these potentially environmentally hazardous activities and, and any impact to our, to our ocean in that regard?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Schwartz, we have a very robust environmental program and it has a number of facets. Quick, just briefly, as far as a city organization, I believe we're the only city department that's classified as a green business through the county's green business program. We did that about two years ago and that looks at all of our operations, which are vast. It's not only the office, it's the folks maintaining the docks, the wharf and everything between. As far as a marina, we are a registered clean marina. We are one of the first in the state and we continue to be one of the leaders in that particular department. I believe we have another clean marina certification as well, so we doubled up on those. As far as boat cleaners and things like that, we offer a number of classes annually so they can, for best management practices and how to do things appropriately and not impact the harbor area. So, and those again are free, so we want to get people trained and up to speed. I should also note that with the business activity permit holders, these folks are our eyes and ears out in the marinas, so when they see somebody that is doing something wrong, we will hear about it immediately.
Excellent.
If they see somebody that does not have a perm, a business activity permit, they will let us know immediately and we'll, and we will go out and talk to the folks and tell them about the process.
Where is that posted? It sounds like it's visually posted such that a neighboring tenant would see if they don't have a permit?
No, so these are folks, great question, these are folks who are actually out in the marinas doing sailing, rigging or varnishing and they'll look and see somebody else working on a boat and be like, that person's not from around here, they don't have a permit. Because they'll have, we, we provide name tags for all the business activity permit to you, so we know it's easily visible who, who is and who isn't.
I see. That's what I was getting at, because I didn't know how you visually identify if there isn't some.
Sorry, yes. So, they, they have a, a name tag that they have with them. We also have a program where we go around and set aside certain marinas or fingers-to-marinas, depending on how large, and we go down every year and we clean underneath those. So, we've circumnavigated the harbor once. We had to cancel it this year because it was right after one of our late spring storms and the, the water was too murky. But we're down there with divers, volunteers, picking up stuff off the bottom of the, of the marina every year, so.
Okay. I think then my last question is regarding the cruise ships, which is the next paragraph down on the same page. I don't know if you have this information. I would just be curious to know what the average daily sales revenue contribution is for cruise visitors versus non-cruise visitors. I don't know if Visit Santa Barbara has this or maybe Mr. Samario's, you know, finance department, but do you have any even anecdotal data for us on that?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Schwartz, we work closely with Visit Santa Barbara and Kathy Janegadix and, and every few years, they put together a study and analyze that. The last figure I recall was somewhere in between, for, these are for cruise ship passengers. I don't know about non-passengers.
Non.
But for cruise ship passengers, I want to say it was between a hundred and fifty and two hundred dollars per day that they're here, that they're out spending, whether that be on food or, or other things downtown. So, it is considerable. I'm not sure how they arrive at that number.
Okay.
But we keep in close contact with them. Again, we work with our hospitality center at the base of Sea Landing, so we're always in contact with those folks.
And related to that, remind me what the, the fee is or fees are for cruise ships that are docking here and in our town?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Schwartz, so when cruise ships come in, they post up outside the harbor because we don't have the facilities to obviously take them inside the harbor.
Yes.
And then they're transported in to Sea Landing and we charge seven dollars per passenger. And that doesn't matter if they stay on the boat or come off. If they have three thousand passengers, we charge them seven dollars per, per, per passenger.
Do you find, is that pretty standard on California, California coastal cities for this fee?
It is. We're a little different on this route that they take up and down the coast, all the way up to San Francisco. Many of the facilities are much larger and so they pull right into a fully serviced dock area and get people on and off. So, we're one of few, some are, I believe Catalina is the same too, where we have to, we don't, but they ferry people on and off. So, it's a little bit more difficult for these folks to get onto the shore. Thankfully, it's Santa Barbara, so they want to get on the shore and we generally have pretty smooth seas for the most part so that they can do that. So, seven dollars, we have found it to be a, a comfortable rate for everybody. They do bring a lot of money to the area, so we have to watch how high we go, how low we go. So, we, we seem to be at a nice, a sweet spot for now.
Sure. Okay, thank you. Those are my questions. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Schwartz. Commissioner Campanella.
Thank you. Mr. Bossi, a question also on the cruise ship passengers, the cruise ships. The reason that we do not allow them to stay overnight is, can you tell us why that is?
Madam Chair, Commissioner, I can't tell you the exact reason because that all started back in two thousand and two. I want to say originally it was, it was primarily based on we don't have the facilities for that. We were concerned also, the public perspective on bringing cruise ships to the city of Santa Barbara. Every time the season ramps up, you kind of have this down period of the summer where you don't see a cruise ship and then in September, you wake up and come down and there's a big cruise ship. And so, over time, that calls to us on that have, have gone down to, we really don't receive those anymore. So, it was more just making sure Santa Barbara kind of stayed Santa Barbara and if they can come in for the day and, and then leave at the end of the day and they're happy with that, we were fine with that as well.
Okay, thank you. Another question. On the harbor, I presume, has facilities that are stationary and some float, I guess. Not, not utilizing it for boats myself, but with climate change and adaptive practices that we see throughout the coastal communities, I know we're on an operating look, but are you looking at capital budget items to perhaps enhance the protective features that you have in the harbor so that the facilities either can be used during certain situations or can rebound pretty quickly?
Madam Chair, Commissioner, we are looking at those types of items. We're working with the planning department as far as the sea level rise and we have our facilities manager, Carl Tryberg, works on those committees. So, we are cognizant of, of the issue and the future issue. We have not yet started to set aside funding for that. I think we're kind of in the exploratory phase of what's going on and, and how long is this going to take, but we are very aware of it. It, it would have a big impact, obviously. Of all the city resources, we would obviously be impacted the most. So, it's something at the top of our agenda that we continue to look at.
I would think that compared to other facilities we have along the coast or near the coast here, that some of your facilities, wherever they're located, you might get some early warning signs because you're out there. I mean, the lowest-placed structure or building or floor number one, is there something that everyone is aware of from all of the tenants and also the management, looking at potentially warning signs or alerts where you see something that may give you an indication there's a change coming?
Madam Chair, Commissioner, we, as far as alerts, we're very cognizant of what's going on with weather patterns. Our harbor patrol is tuned into that every day, every minute of the day. So, we're very aware of incoming storms and what direction they're coming, what direction packs more punch than others. So, we've got that down, I'd say to a science and when something's coming, we warn all our tenants, we supply sandbags for tenants in case the, you know, the waves do come up over the break, the breakwater or the sand. We do have a, a sand berm that we put up in the winter season to help keep the water away and, and so we do things like that for our tenants. We also, when there's a storm coming, depending on the nature of the storm, we will go out and contact all the folks in the various moorings and request that they come into the harbor to be, for a safe place to be. That's not always, they don't always listen, but for the most part, they do and we get those people in and obviously, human life's the, the biggest thing, so we want to make sure they're okay. So, we will make sure they have a place to stay when storms of a significant nature come in. So, it's always something we're, we're aware of and like I said, with the, you know, climate change and sea level rise, it's something that we really have to start, we really do take into, take into consideration as far as our capital projects and programs are concerned.
So, and then let's say if there were somewhat gradual, not storm-related, but gradual changes that are occurring, water elevation or something like that. Are you able to spot those subtle changes that are occurring?
That's a great question. I, I do not know how to do that, but I'm sure our harbor patrol and our facilities as well as our operations crew are. Also, we're not just an island, we're very involved with the various trade organizations of our industry, the various marinas up and down the coast. So, there's a constant interaction with folks up and down the coast about what's going on, what are you seeing, what's going on here? So, we're always talking to other marinas and port districts to make sure we're all on the same page because we all have the same thing at stake and that's, it could be really bad if it was sea level rise.
Thank you. Yep.
Thank you, Commissioner Campanella. I just had a couple quick questions. On our staff report on pages four and five, it talks about commercial fishing is given priority status in the harbor master plan, and it says, the quote was, "Strive to maintain a minimum of 19% of slips for commercial fishing by giving priority for newly created slips to commercial fishing on the then-current waiting list." The way this is worded in the master plan, it seems to imply that there was a minimum of 19% at one point in time, and it's looking now like it's only 5% to 7% of the harbor slips? So I guess that would be part one of my question, and then part two, is there more demand than supply for commercial fishing slips? And if so, how long's the waitlist? So.
Madam Chair, I'll take your questions in reverse order. So there is not a big demand for commercial, we have a very active commercial fishing community, but are there more commercial fishermen, is the industry booming, or are there more people being added? We're not necessarily seeing that, if that is the case, and we do get visiting fishing vessels coming up and down the coast, maybe they're hitting a certain type of sport fish off the coast and they need a place, so they, too, get these benefits, but we will find, we do find space for those commercial vessels. As part of our, the miscellaneous slips that I was talking about for visitors, we generally, outside of big holiday weekends like July 4th, we generally have space open, so we can accommodate those commercial fishing vessels, and they do receive a reduced rate as part of that. So we're always trying to accommodate them, and your first part of your question was the five, it seems to be about 5% to 7%.
Well, yeah, the staff report basically says it's 5% to 7% now, but the harbor master plan says strive to maintain a minimum of 19% of the slips. So that implies that when the master plan was created, that there were 19%, and I realize that the number of slips has grown, but 19% of the slips were for commercial fishermen, and now it's only 5% to 7%. But you're saying that the, that the supply and demand is balanced and it's adequate?
That's correct.
That would be my concern, that was.
That's correct. We would love to see more commercial fishing vessels, but it's an industry that, you know, not necessarily is on the uptick, but, and we do have a lot of folks that have been there for quite a long time, and, but you are seeing some younger folks getting into it as well, so we're hopeful that it'll get back up to the 19%, because we definitely make sure that those folks find a place. We don't really add slips too often, I think we added four, maybe in the last five years, four slips. I want to say it used to be 1,139, and then we added four through a reconfiguration, and then those go to the waitlist and commercial fishermen if needed, but I don't, if I recall, I don't think it would, commercial fishermen jumped on that, because they were already, they already had their slips.
Do you have a waitlist for recreational, recreational vessel slips?
We do have a waitlist. It used to be very large, it's not, we whittle away at that, it's very small at this point in time.
Yeah.
So when a slip does come up through somebody passing on or something of that nature, the first thing it goes to is that slip waiting list, and if somebody on that list wants that particular size slip, then they get it.
Okay, great. And then my last question was, and you've already hit on this, I guess, is you talked about the annual parking permit program and that you're considering potential changes, and I were going to ask you what those potential changes might look like, and I don't know if you're prepared to comment on that, but if you're not, will you be presenting those potential changes, and I'll emphasize the word potential, at the Harbor Commission next week?
Madam Chair, we will be presenting those proposed ordinance and policy changes at the August meeting of the Harbor Commission.
Okay.
So next week at the Harbor Commission, I'll just give a brief summary on our workshop from June 13th, kind of go over what I did with you, 50 participants, and kind of how we structured the meeting. So that's on Thursday, and then that following Monday, we have a Harbor Commission Parking Subcommittee, which will be the first kind of unveiling of proposed changes, policy as well as ordinance changes that we're looking for the Harbor Commission to consider.
Okay, that's great, that's a good recap of that. Okay, thank you. I think that's, so my only questions for you. So we'll move to comments, and I thank you for your presentation and answering all our questions. Does anyone want, have comments at this point? Commissioner Jordan?
I'll just reiterate, just to annoy you, Mr. Bossi, but once every five years. So this is clearly, I'm sure, what the same template is five years ago, and five years ago, and five years ago, and so I'm just chafing at the structure of the way we've already done it. But it's obviously a business-related statistical report, rather than a 10,000-foot picture down on, but just a case in point, and Mr. Campanella asking about sea level rise, you know, the upcoming issues, all you're talking about there is parking permits, and in five years, you might have inundation events and not have a parking lot many days of the year, and in 30 years, it might be a lagoon and you might not even have a parking lot. There's also no mention of the threat to a working harbor from the annual dance with the dredging operation for the mouth of the harbor, and the funding, and if the company's out of business or in business, and that type of thing. And then again, back to my nexus with the support to a working harbor from other adjacent zones, it just, I think it would, this may not be the report that does this, you might do something else, somewhere else that does all that, but it'd be, it would certainly make more sense to me than getting a, just kind of a business statistical report on what's out there. This is more like a backwards report, rather than a forwards report, and I was anticipating much more of a forward-looking report than what's happened in the last five years. So that'd be my only suggestion, so more work, more time.
Thank you, Commissioner Jordan. Commissioner Schwartz?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Very helpful report from you and the management team, and I think we've kind of teased out a number of areas of interest and inquiry for you to possibly take back. My overarching thought about how we're approaching, and maybe this is on the heels of Commissioner Jordan's comment and sort of underlying request, shortly after I joined the commission, which was January 2010, I began discussions with Betty Weiss about why we're not master planning, first in the funk zone, and really in the whole coastal area, the coastal zone area, which is basically below the freeway and not so much residential, but other. Now we're looking at residential, of course, in some of the areas. So at this point, when I look at the map, which is slide four that you showed us, which is the HC zone, I feel that we're taking sort of a myopic approach to not only what we're doing now, but in looking ahead to the best of our ability, as we see trends, as neighboring coastal communities see trends or experiencing trends, and I'm concerned that we're not taking a sufficient kind of comprehensive strategic look across all of the zones. I mean, these designations are artificial, as we know. So we've carved out these sub-geographies in the coastal zone for various reasons over decades, but at this point, is that really the wisest, most strategic way to go about looking at how to understand both the sea level rise science portion, and Commissioner Wiskom and I are on that Subcommittee, you probably know that, but everything else beyond that, it includes trending businesses, businesses that are going extinct, new businesses that want to come in, recreational, local coastal plan policy evolution, from the Coastal Commission's evolutionary policies themselves, and all of this, and maybe you could, you know, enlighten me if there's some forum that's taking place, some mechanism that we have in place in the city that I'm not aware of, stepping back and looking on an integrated basis at all of the zones within our coastal zone, you know, mostly non-residential, but also some residential. I think that's a very important sort of enlightened approach that I think we need to take if we're not now, and I'm not aware, so wasn't a question to you, I'll just leave that with you, but as I participate either as a liaison or as Subcommittee members or in working groups, as I do, as a member of the Planning Commission, I'm not seeing that strategic integration, and it concerns me on every level, you know, economic, environmental. So I'm going to look for opportunities myself to pursue these conversations, perhaps, I mean, with Commissioner Wiskom and maybe Commissioner Jordan and staff, and also perhaps some council members, as to what we can do that makes sense, to look at this in a more integrated fashion. But thank you again for the presentation, this is, it feels like so much has transpired in five years, like we're in such a different place, Mr. Bossi, in every way, as a city, as a community, environmental. Look at all the discussions that's taking place about how to revitalize State Street alone, how much, how many resources and effort is going into that, and this isn't really different. We're really talking about trying to look ahead with the economics, global, you know, California, the science that's fast evolving, that we have access to, and how to be kind of a smarter city in planning, which may include, you know, a complete revisit of how we zone. I mean, I made my own comments on the OM1 zone, and we had 35 North Caixes or Chavez here, won't go back over that conversation, but it's really, it's caused me to think a great deal about this, and so I'm hoping there are opportunities to maybe, whether it's engaging department heads in some brainstorming, along with maybe a couple of council members and a couple of planning commissioners, I don't know, I'm just brainstorming right now on the fly. But I'd like, I'd like to see that kind of very smart planning start to take place, and I think we have, we have the bright minds, we have the knowledgeable folks to do that, and so I thank you for being here today. Maybe this can jumpstart something that's much more strategic and integrated, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Schwartz. Commissioner Campanella?
Thank you, I do agree with the comments of my fellow commissioners. I also think the city has been able to do a very great job of maintaining what the harbor is about, and, you know, we get friends that come in town, it's, let's go to Brofies, and I see the Brofie square footage here, but I know I only occupy about four square feet out on the balcony when we go down there. Well, I'm still standing at the end of the deck, but by keeping it as a working harbor, I think it's really great for the locals and also the tourists that come here. I mean, you go to some places along the coast, and you have to look for the signs, where are the boats, you know? How do you see something that reminds you that it is a harbor? And you can't substitute for a working harbor once it goes away, okay? So I think you're able to maintain that, you've maintained the tenants, retained the flavor, the atmosphere down there, and it looks like things function well, and a bunch of neighbors there conducting business for a lot of years. So try to maintain that, but at the same time, we do have to look to the future for the zone, for what might happen on climate change, and I would suggest, I don't know about my fellow commissioners, but when you start looking at your capital budget for some type of resiliency, that maybe we get a look at that and not wait the five years, but let's say, when you come up with a plan of what type of structures and mitigation is going into place, that maybe you give us an update on that, and I'm assuming that's going to take place sooner than later, so I would make that request as part of my comments. Other than that, thank you very much for updating us, and appreciate the work you guys do. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Campanella. I think in response to that, I think when we, when the sea level rise adaptation plan is complete, it will come to the Planning Commission, and it will, you know, a big component of it will be the HC zone, and with the potential mitigation measures for sea level rise, so I think, I think we will see that. I'm, I just have a couple comments. I appreciate the report, I think it was really great, and it's, you have a tremendous amount of information packed into seven pages, so it was a terrific report, and I want to congratulate you on the success of the harbor, as someone who visits the harbor, it's just a great place to be, it's very vibrant, and there's a lot going on and a lot you can do, and it works really well, and that's based on your hard work and staff's hard work. I think, I do agree with Commissioner Schwartz on taking a more strategic approach and perhaps being more proactive, and I'm thinking about, when I was on the Parks and Recreation Commission, when there was a recreational program that was losing attendees, they switched to something more trendy or something that worked better that people, and then the numbers went back up again, and I particularly noticed it in your stats about the catamarans, and, you know, perhaps there's other uses there that would provide a better revenue source for you, and I think you want to say something, Mr. Bossi, about that, do you?
That's a great point, and what I don't want you to think is we're just not being active.
No, I'm not trying to imply that you're, that you're just sitting back twilling your thumbs, no.
Yeah. So what we've seen with that catamaran is that has kind of gone up and down, it's on a down right now, but consequently, what we've seen is the SUP trend shoot through the roof.
Correct, yes.
And so, and that's a lot of our tenants, rent SUPs, and we've seen their, just the sheer number of their stock of SUPs shoot through the roof. We have looked at, and we kind of toss it around every now and then, what to do, is there something else we could do out at West Beach? It's interesting to note that when you think about putting maybe SUP racks or something out there, we have a huge kite surfing, kite boarding, whatever it's called, group out there every day of the year, it's amazing, and these folks take up a lot of space, and so we've got that active community going. It's not a revenue source for us, but they are very active out there, and we have to take into consideration, if we are going to put something out there, how will that impact other activities?
Right.
But I agree, we're always on the lookout.
Yeah, conflicting uses and things, I, public safety, I understand that, but I, so that's, that's great that you're looking at that, and I agree about the SUPs, they've really, they've even made the harbor more vibrant, and, you know, we've had a lot more visitors come and rent them, and so I guess that would be it. And my last comment is just, it's really niggly about a word that you used on, in your conclusion, and that's that you said, "Staff believes the current mix of uses is adequate." I would really love to see you change that word to, and it's a really small point, but, you know, it just, it doesn't leave me with, you know, the, kind of the cheerleader, "Go Harbor" feeling, you know, maybe appropriate is better or something, so.
Awesome.
Awesome, yeah.
No, but I agree, I read that today, and I went, "That's kind of a weird word, that just sounds very vanilla."
Doesn't, yeah, it's very, very vanilla, so.
I agree, I will definitely change that.
Okay, you have five years to think about it, so.
[laughter]
Okay, well, thank you very much for that, I really appreciate it, and thank you for all you and your staff does.
Thank you very much, I appreciate your time, and yes, kudos to our staff, it's a team operation, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bossi. Okay, do we need a break? Okay, we'll do five minutes and then do a changing of the guards, and then move on to item 3B. Great, thank you. I am reconvening the Planning Commission meeting for Thursday, July 11th, 2019, and we're going to move on to item 3B, which is another discussion item, annual update on the status and effectiveness of construction-related mitigations and monitoring for the Cottage Hospital Modernization and Seismic Compliance Project at Santa Barbara Cottage Hospital, 400 West Pueblo, SP8 Hospital Zone General Plan Designation Institutional. And Mr. Busk, thank you.
Thank you. Michelle Bedard will give the staff presentation.
Michelle Bedard will give the staff presentation.
Thank you, welcome, Ms. Bedard.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioners, Michelle Bedard, Assistant Planner, will do the presentation today. And we're back again this year for the annual Cottage Hospital update, part of the original conditions of approval of the original project approved in September of 2005. The annual update occurs every year and for three years post-construction. This is the condition language that requires the, our meeting here today. And just sort of familiar with the Cottage Hospital, but the vicinity map on the left showing the location of the hospital, and then this is the NAP building parking structure and the Pueblo parking structure down here to that direction, and then on the right, just kind of a nice little image of the hospital construction project. And again, just flip through some quick aerials, pre-project, 2004, hospital construction, hospital location, is the whole project site. 2008, after construction began, you can see construction down here on the lower corner. 2012, well into construction, new construction buildings, moving along. Aerials of 2015 and 2017, 2015 on the left showing the Phase 6 construction, 2017 at some point in its near completion. Quick little aerial glance at the Phase 6 site plan, showing kind of the medical surgical rooms, et cetera. So the nuts and bolts of why we're here today, the condition compliance, primarily the tree care and maintenance. There's a, as we're aware, the Morton Bay fig tree at the corner of Castillo and Pueblo as a city landmark designated in December 2011. The tree remains in good health, have a picture in a couple slides. Coast live oaks also continue to thrive. Solid waste reduction, one of the conditions of approval was to divert as much from the landfill as possible. The Cottage Hospital's done a great job at that over the years of construction, they're currently 95.4 solid waste diversion through December 2018. Three neighborhood meetings were held last year, they're required to hold two meetings annually. Good news, there's no construction-related complaints during last calendar year. So a couple of quick images, the Morton Bay fig tree as we see pre-construction of the project on the lower left, and a street, Google Street View image of 2019 view, post-construction with, there you are. Quick solid waste reduction, just showing you, it's a lovely excerpt from the Cottage Hospital's plan, showing the 95.4% diversion and only 4.6% solid waste. Status of construction, Phase 6 was a new construction, construction began September 2015 and was completed in October of last year. Phase 8 was the interior remodel of the buildings to remain, construction began early this year and is estimated to be complete by December 2020. That concludes my brief synopsis of the construction year, the Cottage Hospital teams here to give a little bit more in depth, and available for questions.
Great, thanks. Does anyone have any questions with Ms. Bedard? Do you, do you want to come up and, great, welcome, Mr. Biscaro.
Thank you, Chair. Chair Wiskom, members of the Planning Commission, I'm Ron Biscaro, I'm the Vice President for Project Management. Thank you, Michelle. I'm here with Ruben Gomez, our Director of Construction for Santa Barbara Cottage, and he's intimately familiar with some of the waste reduction and tree mitigation issues because he's on the ground, has been a superintendent on the project, and last year was promoted to project director, so Ruben's with, with me for the first time. Our former director, Mr. Thompson, retired about a year ago, and he's living in Orange County now.
Oh, my goodness.
Let's see. Anyway, wanted to just give you a little update, further update, you'll see a few of these slides as repetitive, but again, our project phasing, we have finished Phase 6 back in September last year, we occupied in, in February, and we're still working through the contractual issues with our contractor, and hopefully in the next couple of months we'll, we'll pay the last of our retention there. In the meantime, we've completed just this past month, the Three Pueblo Connector, it's part of the bridge system between the Compton Pavilion and the legacy building called the Pueblo Pavilion now, so that was completed, one of Ruben's projects. Administration, an expansion essentially of, of the footprint, another conference area will be started in a couple of weeks, and the emergency department remodel actually began after Phase 6 was complete. Phase 1 was sort of a reallocation of some space for, for a new waiting area and triage area for the ER, because in Phase 6, we expanded the emergency department, and now we're coming back to the original building that was built in the mid-1980s, and we're renovating that to a new care initiation process, which I think will be great, it'll help reduce waiting time and be very more, much more functional for our staff, physicians, and patients. So Phase 8 will continue over the next few years, and I'll get into the timeline shortly. Again, Phase 6, two pavilions were built and they're operating fantastically, I think they complement the rest of the facility, and then all the, all the connectors are all built now, including the third, third floor, so we're very happy with that. Overall, as I said, we're into construction in Phase 8 till about early 2021, so a little different from Michelle's slide, probably start a little bit later on the administrator project, but we have a year plus, maybe a year and a half to go. A couple of photos, we have a new museum in the area of the Arlington Pavilion, a little photo of our museum, which sort of depicts the, the history of Cottage and the healthcare facilities that we have in our system, so we're very proud of that. New amphitheater available to the public as well, so this is more for the teaching program, and so this is a great addition, in addition to the Burtonus Auditorium we have on the sixth floor, so the amphitheater was put into service a few months back. Here's a view of the nursing station for the new pediatric area on the Compton Pavilion, so really light, cheery, really robust area for, for kids, they just love it here in terms of the care they receive and the ambiance that we've created. Again, here's their play area, very, very modern, very staff-oriented sort of development of colors here to, to make it a pleasing environment for, for our patients. River of Life, just a continuation of what we did in Phase 4, it's essentially the same, same area, we actually landscaped it similarly, and it's another area for outdoor dining, and it's another good functional space, another really green space for us on the campus. Phase 8, as I said, emergency department remodel, Phase 2 will get underway in the next few weeks, we're building a few security measures still, and then we'll start the Phase 2, which will be essentially the renovation of the existing ER, complex renovation, we'll, we'll start and probably take about 15 months for Phase 2, another six months for Phase 3, as we renovate the trauma rooms, and then I would say by the early part of 2021, the emergency department remodel will be complete, we'll have about 38 patient rooms, which is close to double the size that we have now, should be able to take care of 75,000 to 80,000 patients. Our current volume is about 50,000, just under that now, so we have growth potential to manage it for the, for the next several decades. Administration, again, a fairly straightforward remodel, and again, the other one has, has been completed. What I wanted to talk about a little bit today was, was our seismic upgrade. The city has worked with us for the past year, we've received a substantial conformity determination from staff, we also have an encroachment permit that we got signed off by the City Council recently, so we're really talking about upgrading the two legacy pavilions, were built in the 1960s, concrete steel reinforced buildings. Back in 11 and 12, we upgraded them to some level, called, in the OSHPOD or the State of California nomenclature, it's called SPC 2, or Structural Performance Category 2. What we're doing now, since 2012, the State of California has increased its requirements and given us the opportunity to upgrade it to what we call SPC 4D, which is a level below what we just built, because these are concrete buildings, so we can reinforce these and add shear walls to these buildings, and get them to a fairly high level of earthquake, you know, seismic, seismic capability, if you will. So in the event of an earthquake, you know, six or seven, we should be able to remain fully functional, which is our goal. In the current state, we're probably not quite there, but with this upgrade that we will actually start in the next couple of months, we should get there in the next couple of years, both for the Pueblo Pavilion, early and by late 2020, and we will wait to do the Bath Pavilion until the other one is complete. So just show you a few images of what we're doing. These are some, what they call axonometric drawings of the Pueblo Pavilion, and you can see, if you look at the top one, you'll see the front entrance, it's on Bath Street now, you don't really see the landscaping here, but essentially that's the front entrance in Portica Share, and you can see that shear wall off to the left on that particular view. When you come down to the lower view here, you'll see the back of the Sage Library, which is juxtaposed against the, the new Compton Pavilion, we have two shear walls to build there, we have some piles that have to go deep into the ground, some major foundation work that has to be tied into the hospital, and we have some drag beams that run essentially east to west along here that have to be kind of drilled into the current, current hospital and integrated. And again, on the Pueblo side, we have this brace frame construction and plus a foundation that has to be built as well, so this is sort of what we have to do over the next year, year and a half, to bring this building to a full compliance that allows this building to be used indefinitely for us, and really gets us to a seismic level that we believe is really in the best interest of our patients and the community, frankly, and so we're really happy to do this. The board approved this project a few weeks ago, cost about 22 million to do the structural work and the interior work that really affects every floor, there's about 78,000 square feet in this building that has to be upgraded, and everything seismic above the ceiling has to be braced as well, so it's a big effort that Ruben will be directing, along with our key staff as well. Again, this is an image of the current Bath Street entrance, it's, we've discontinued the use of this entrance essentially, except for limited hours. Ultimately, as we get into the construction of this project, the main entrance at Castillo will be the only entrance for, for patients and visitors, which is a big security issue for us, and I think we're really pleased to get there. This image here is, is something we've shared with staff, and this is an Arcadia drawing of what this will look like in about a year and a half. So essentially, we're just changing the pathway, making this a wonderful green space to complement what we've done on Old Park Lane and other areas of the facility, and you can see a big change from what it looks like today, we're eliminating the driveway and making this a green space. So I think staff have been great in working with us, we've only recently been through the Architecture Board review, and they, they are appreciative as well of the changes. So that's a big change for us there. This is an example of the café, the café will close in a few weeks to facilitate this project. This red line essentially depicts the shear wall that I showed you earlier in the axonometric drawing. Because of the shear wall, it's essentially going to be 18 inches thick, you know, running from the first to the second floor and all the way down to the basement area with piles below that and a new foundation, essentially renders the café unusable, because the eating area now is essentially eliminated because of this seismic work. This was not an option for us, this is something that calced out, State of California is about a, I think, a few weeks away from approving our drawings, we've been in the state for about two years on this one, and essentially, this is why the café will close, and much to the chagrin of our unemployees and visitors, I might add, but I think it's something that's important because of the outcome for the building. Here's what we were talking about earlier, here's a sort of a drawing of, essentially a photo that's superimposed with a, with the beams that we'll have to put in on the right side, and the encroachment permit is on the sidewalk where you see those two people walking, we have to get into the sidewalk to get down underneath it to get the foundation and the piles below that, so city's been super cooperative in allowing us to do that. It's the only area of all this project that will require that, so the sidewalk will be closed here, rerouted. And then lastly, this is the area I spoke about, the Sage Library is where those windows are on the left, that's the Pueblo Pavilion, and to the right, you can see just the edge of the new Compton Pavilion that was built last year. We've completed half the landscaping and left half the landscaping out to allow our contractor to begin to do the work that they need here, and then we'll restore the landscaping per essentially the original design with a few modifications to pick up some of the changes that we've made. So in the end, I would say by early 2021, this will be complete, and the building will be seismically enhanced, and then we'll move over to the Bath Pavilion and do the same. However, the complexity of that structural change is not as, as great as this one here. This is a, built a little sooner, not quite as strong, and so our structural engineers had to do a little bit more to this building to enhance it. In addition to what you see here on the structural side, we're also doing carbon fiber wrapping, which we did back in 11 and 12 to strengthen columns essentially, so they wouldn't crack, and so this is going to have some carbon fiber wrapping at key spots as well through the, through the Pueblo Pavilion. This is what the exterior structure will look like, we're going to essentially have to come back here and rip that wall we built back in Phase 5 in 2011 and 12, and tear it apart, rebuild it, and put the shear wall here that you see in purple, and the beams go horizontal here, are called drag beams, they actually go into the facility on the first floor and the second floor, both in the administrative area and the nuclear medicine area, which is a Ridley Tree Cancer Center, and they've been cooperative with us as well because they're, they're going to be subjected to changes, but at the end of the day, it's, we're going to have a stronger building as well. So that's the type of work we have to do, and it's pretty invasive and it's very, very noisy. So what we're doing here in the coming weeks, our staff and facilities, led by Mr. Henderson, will be working with Mr. Gomez, will be moving the balance of the staff out of this facility as best we can, so we can deal with the noise. I expect it'll reverberate a little bit beyond the walls of Cottage, but Ruben will be coordinating any issues we have there, and our experience, at least in the major demolition in the past, was that the noise doesn't get past the first block. So most of the folks around Cottage are essentially commercial or physicians, and they're going to be the ones that are going to hear the most of it. I expect our residential neighbors won't hear too much, but there will be sound, and it's unfortunate, but we've got to tie it in with rebar, and it's, it's a tough, tough job. Lastly, construction updates, we have a meeting with the neighbors in a couple of weeks. We've, we've kind of went it down to maybe two a year, and we'll meet as, as often as needed, I guess, if there's any issues. Our general attendance is usually two to four people, so Ruben and I and our staff go to those and respond to any questions, but as, as Michelle has said, there's been very few issues that have come up the last few years despite the major construction of Phase 6. So we're anticipating some, some issues here, but there won't be really traffic issues, it'll just be to what degree the noise occurs, and mostly it will be for our own employees who are inhabiting adjoining pavilions, and there's a lot of earplugs that will be available for them during this process. So I hope this provides a, a good overview of the next few years, again, as we wind down the Facility Master Plan in Phase 8, over the next year, year and a half, we're getting into this, and by 2021, I expect anything visible for this campus will, will be done, which, which is a be-a-welcome sight, I'm sure. So I'd be happy to respond to any questions that you may have, and thank you very much for your attention.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Biscaro, for being here, and for all of you being here. Now I know who Ruben is, because you're in the Arborist Report, and I thought, who's Ruben? So, so welcome, Mr. Gomez. We have a couple lights on, I'm not sure who put theirs on first, so we'll go with questions. Commissioner Lodge.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Could you put up this slide, the, the overhead that shows the whole project? I'm trying to get clear which building is which. I think I've got, the Pueblo is like the original entrance prior to all of this.
Yeah, the Pueblo Pavilion is, is this one right here, and the Bath, the Bath entrance is right here.
So for the benefit of anyone that's watching, it's in the lower right-hand corner of the slide. They, no one that, the video does not pick up the, what you call it?
Laser light or whatever it is.
Yeah, laser pointer, sorry.
Yeah, sorry, just a little bit, it looks like it picks up a little bit there, yeah, okay, understood, but not on the screen.
Okay, so, so the, so the lower brown, lower right brown building is the Pueblo Building.
Yes.
And the Bath Pavilion, and the Bath Pavilion is in red?
The Bath Pavilion looks purple and yellow above it, so the cutoff line is midway between those two buildings, they were built a couple of years apart, and so the Bath is the low, the Pueblo is the lower one in the right-hand corner, and the Bath Pavilion is the one above it, and then the Energy Center is the one you see with a separation on the top, that was built back in 2007.
Okay, and the, and so, and that, that's where the, the entry in between
Okay, and so, and that, that's where the, the entry in between those, the yellow section is, is the lobby for where people used to come in?
Yes, it says OP Lobby on the, on the drawing right there. So where it says OP Lobby is where the Bath, Bath, the Bath Street entrance used to be in the Pueblo Pavilion.
Okay.
It's on Bath Street, that's why it's confusing.
Okay, now, okay, and so this sort of lime green, that is the Arlington, is that?
The Arlington Pavilion is the one that says emergency and where it has the red line there, so we've renamed that. Those two buildings, formerly it was called the Centennial Building, where the emergency sign is, and then below that is what we built in Phase Six, above where it says Court. And so those two together, they're connected now, are both called the Arlington Pavilion.
Okay.
So that's a, again, a new nomenclature for us, and we re-signed the entire facility to reflect that.
And then proceeding to the left, what do we have?
The left is, is where it says PACU Surgery. That's the Honiporo Pavilion, so we named that a few years back after the street that it's on.
Okay.
Yeah. The one in the lower left-hand corner is the Wood Clices Pavilion. That's named after the donor. The Ridley Tree Pavilion is the one in the middle, the second yellow one from the right, and the Compton Pavilion is the one on, in Phase Six, the beige one there that we built in the last couple of years.
Okay, thanks, thank you for clarifying that.
We probably should rename those so it's more clear. We will do that for next year.
Oh, you mean on the, on the graph. And then the, the blue upper right thing, that, that is, that's where all the heating and?
Yes.
Equipment is?
It's our, yeah, it's our central plant. We have our emergency generators there, we have our chillers there, our cooling towers there, and so that's really where the, the power generation, all our electrical gear is in that building as well, and it's redistributed throughout the whole campus from there.
Okay, and then last question, one the Chair Wiskam also had. What happened to Phase Seven?
Well, Phase Seven was not officially a phase. What we've done between Six and Seven is some of the remodels, we've called them Phase Seven, but there was nothing official, and so it was something that was, the nomenclature just dropped Phase Seven at some point, and we went to Phase Eight. So we've been managing that internally from a communication standpoint, but it was just a small remodels, nothing significant.
Okay, thank you. Those are my questions.
That, it's so funny because we, Commissioner Lodge and I had exactly that same question. What happened to Phase Seven? It just got skipped over. Okay, Commissioner Schwartz.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Biscaro, in our packet entitled Facilities Master Schedule, we have a timeline. It's page 57 of 74 in our packet, and it's, shows the beginning date of 2002, and it goes through 2020. Did I hear you say, oh, that, so this is a different slide than what we have. What we have is through 2020. Maybe it got cut off, I don't know. I was going to ask you if in fact it goes through 2021, which is, I think, what you said, is that, that's the projected end year?
That's the projected end year for what we officially call Phase Eight, which is related to the original Facility Master Plan.
Okay.
And this slide was updated a week after the one we provided to Michelle.
Okay, very good.
So we made a few changes on it just to reflect a couple of things, notably the red spaces, what we haven't built yet, and we started that in, in December of 18 with the Emergency Department remodeled Phase One. So what we haven't put on here, because it wasn't originally envisioned as part of the Facility Master Plan, was the seismic upgrades that are reflected here in my slides.
The $22 million you mentioned?
Yes.
Of seismic engineering, reengineering?
That is for the Pueblo Pavilion only, and we're not sure the price yet on the Bath, but it probably will be a little bit less.
Okay, let's see then. I was interested in, I think you call it the Pueblo Pavilion. This is where you're removing the driveway or the hardscape?
Yes.
Converting it to greenscape? Could you put that slide up again?
Certainly.
I was interested to know if you, or I think Arcadia Studios is, they're the landscape architecture firm?
Yes, they are.
Do you have any data for us on, you know, how much concrete was removed, kind of what it, what is the net, what are the net benefits, both maybe quantitative and qualitative environmentally, that would tell a story about the benefits to the property, the patients, our community in converting a hardscape area to this greenscape?
Let me ask Heidi if she has a comment on that. Heidi?
And if not today, you know, maybe you could follow up with staff and provide that to me.
Yeah, I would be happy to follow up.
Ms. Jones.
Hello. Be happy to follow up on that. Through the substantial conformity process, we did have some bio information relating to the landscaping, but we don't have any of the hardscape information. We can follow up with you on that.
Okay, I think that, you know, not, not knowing what the particulars are, it could be a very important and influential story for us to share with other applicants that are, that could consider this, should consider it, you know, whether it's this type of a use or other.
Okay.
But that would be great. And then, let's see, one of the, the pages in our packet, of course, is the Project Management Hotline.
Yes.
I did not see, but perhaps I overlooked, a, a section that identifies how many calls have come into this hotline versus the attendees at the neighborhood meetings and what those calls pertain to, if, if there were any.
Yeah, let me see if we have any information on that.
I don't believe we had any. We did not.
No hotline calls. Could you come to the microphone just because that's the way it gets recorded? Thank you.
Yeah, during the, the year 2018, we did not receive any calls. So the hotline does go into our hospital facility, and then we have to make a distinction between complaints or concerns that the neighborhood has with regards to hospital operations versus us versus construction operations.
I see.
And for the construction portion of it, we did not receive any calls.
I see, okay, so it's being used sort of as a generic hotline, you're getting calls on other matters and you're, then you have to separate out?
That's correct.
I see, okay. Just to note, when I was living closer to Cottage Hospital in 2012, I did have an occasion to test your hotline as a neighbor, and I was very pleased within 24 hours to get a call back from a very senior management individual.
Okay, great.
So it, it was working then. I'm just, I'm curious, that's why I asked you now, but, but I no longer live in your neighborhood, so. I think, and this is the helipad, the helicopter landings. I was going to ask you about the data.
Yes, I put that up at the end because invariably there's a question on how many uh?
Yes, it's an ongoing theme, isn't it?
Yes, yes ma'am.
So let's just look at the data very quickly. I want to see what it reflects in terms of the fluctuation of numbers of trips, right? These are helicopter trips, so 72.
Yeah, we saw a little uptick in 2018, no apparent reason there. I think we, we saw a real reduction the previous two years from the year before that, and this year it's down again. So it's very random. It depends on the nature of the patients that need our, need our assistance, and most of those transports are neurological, orthopedic, trauma, or pediatrics.
I know we've discussed that in years past.
Yes.
Let's see, I may just have one more question for you, Mr. Biscaro. So in looking at this, I mean, through 2018, this is 16 years, a 16-year life cycle, and I was wondering if your team has looked at the costs, sort of by category of costs, to in the end, and if today is not the day to, to share this information, sort of the key learnings? Where have been the concentration of costs, looking back or looking back to look forward, kind of back to the future for hospital construction and, and management? Are there any key learnings in terms of how to, and maybe to help others, other large property owners, civic or public building owners, reduce costs? Because as we've been discussing on the housing front, but it also pertains to the healthcare industry, as costs rise in doing business in the myriad ways we're doing business, including both elective and non-elective massive reconstruction of our primary hospital in our community, costs get absorbed and/or passed through in various ways. And so how do we help the end users, in this case, the patients, the housing side, the tenants, bear a lower burden of the cost? So I don't know if you have highlights of that for us today, you know, where could costs have been shaved? I mean, you're now, you know, two-thirds, more than two-thirds of the way through this very long process, and maybe next year, if not, you know, today for us, you could provide that. I would be interested in your key learnings.
Okay, I think that, well, first of all, Commissioner Schwartz, it's a very complicated question that you're asking because it would probably take some time to describe it, but I'll give you a couple of, you know, my early thoughts on this. You know, our team and the hospitals learned a, a lot over the course of a billion dollars of construction for numerous projects, including Cottage Hospital, which is by far, I would say 80% of the cost is attributed to Cottage and all the phases and all the remodels that we have, have dealt with over the last few years. I think that the market, the construction market has fluctuated markedly at times, and I think we initially certainly underestimated the cost of this project by half back in 2003 and 2004. So I would say one key learning is never rely on an architect's estimate.
Ouch.
Not that I have anything against architects because they're our great partners, but they're not estimators. And so I think that that was a key learning early on. We were surprised by the escalation issues that occurred back in '04, '05, and '06, and it essentially doubled the cost of the project for us. And so we look for many opportunities to value engineer what we had in the hospital and implemented some, and others we couldn't, because there was essentially a mandate from the State of California in terms of how you build a facility, both structurally and non-structurally. And then the equipment, we've probably spent about $80 million on equipment over the course of all these remodels that we've done, so that's sort of out of our control as well. I would say the, the biggest advantage to maintaining a schedule, which reduces your, your risk, your escalation risk, is to do pre-construction work, which we did back in '06, '07 for the Phase Four. We did not do that early on and paid the price, and so a big learning there, and which we share with other facilities like Stanford and others who have had issues as well in terms of maintaining a schedule, is to do as much as you can on the pre-construction side and work with your contractor partners to, to mitigate issues in the job so that, as Ruben could tell you, you know, when we say we're going to build this in 36 months, we built Phase Six in 36 months. Contractor said originally we could build it in '27. We said, no, you can't, you're going to build it in '34, and we said 36 is realistic, and we delivered that project in, within three years. So I think that was probably based on about 10 years of learning in terms of what is realistic and achievable in terms of building something that large at such complexity. The State of California was enormously flexible in Phase Six as well, so we had a much more disjointed inspection process the first few years, but the last three years, we had a very fluid process, and I would say we had great cooperation from the state from day one, because in an OSHPOD environment, which is different from the city, you're really managing change after change because nothing comes out like it should on the plan, and everything you do is subject to more changes because you can't build it the way it's presented. So the state allowed us a lot of flexibility in terms of moving information sort of in real time to allow us to sort of build change orders, change plans around so that we could go build it, inspect it, and get the State of California to sign off on any changes that we made. Most of those are absolutely nondiscretionary, they're just, you know, architectural things that come up. Oh, I don't see it, I can't, I can't inspect that, so go, go change the plans. And so I think between the pre-construction process and the fluidity of our, our inspection team and our OSHPOD inspectors, we were able to build this project in a timely basis. Phase Four didn't go quite that smoothly, and it probably took us an extra seven months to get done, and that, that begot more costs for us. So as, as we went from the Energy Center to the Phase Four, to Phase Five, to Phase Six, we essentially learned every three years how to do it better and how to plan it better. So our staff, Ruben and others, were involved in lots of pre-planning, lots of coordination that, you know, you don't really always have the time to do, but because these horizons are long, we have a year, year and a half as we go through the permit process to do the planning, and so that begets more planning, and so when you hit the ground running, you can build it per plant. And so we've spent the last year, for example, on this pre-construction for the seismic work. We know that exterior stuff's $15 million to build it, and I think we're gonna, we've honed the schedule down to hopefully 13 months. The sooner we build it, the less noise there is for everybody, including our own patients and our staff, and, and so that's been, I think, the biggest driver for us, how to manage projects in advance so that when you go build it, you know, you're at the vagaries of the market for, for your contractor, and that's just the way it is.
Yes.
But you at least build it per schedule, and you have the opportunity then to deliver it in a reasonable timeframe to satisfy, you know, your own budgetary needs, but, but, you know, to do it in a responsible manner. Now, your, your question about how do you pass it on to consumers? There's really no relationship between, you know, adding depreciation to our financials and really essentially what we, what we charge patients. You know, our, our revenue stream is, is largely determined by Medicare and Medi-Cal revenue at Cottage. 65 to 70% is Medicare, Medi-Cal revenue. We have a 23 to 25% of, of our, of our patients are insured patients that are HMR or PPO. So there's a, a giant sort of discussion that could ensue there about how to, how to pass it along, but our, our goal is to achieve a reasonable revenue so that we end up every year with about a 2 to 4% net revenue on the bottom line for Cottage, which I think is reasonable. I think last year we were probably about 3.5%, and that allows us to, you know, fund our capital. We spend, you know, a fair amount of capital every year just on refurbishing equipment and whatever construction we do. So, so it, it's not really a verbatim change from construction to revenue, but our goal is to kind of keep our costs in line, and we've done that in a, in a very systematic way through our contracting process and not pushing, you know, pushing high prices out there to insurers. It's, it's all about just trying to make enough to get through the process and to move forward. So I think the, the revenue expense piece is a whole different, and a whole different kettle of fish. We have about a 1.0, I think a $1.4 billion revenue budget, but our net revenue is probably a, a fraction of that, and so our revenue or expenses generally translates to about 3%, regardless of what we put in for capital. So I'm trying to kind of dis equate, if you will, the, the two issues because they are different.
Well, that's encouraging to hear about the State of California, that in terms of your, what you've had to do back and forth with them and that? They've shown appreciative flexibility.
Yes.
Yeah. Madam Chair, do you just want questions or do you want us to make some remarks? What would, how'd you, how would you like to handle that at this point?
Well, I, no one's here for public comment on this issue, so I'll close public comment, and you go ahead if you want to open up with your remarks.
Sure, sure. So, you know, having, having again served on the Planning Commission since 2010, and that means, you know, year, year upon year, having these discussions with you, hearing the presentations, knowing that together the city and Cottage have worked through construction issues, neighborhood issues, et cetera, I just have to compliment, I probably do this each year, but I want to underscore, as I think about the scale and complexity of what Cottage has undertaken, needed to undertake, that our community has needed Cottage to undertake, to be a class, you know, Class A health providing resource in our community and that you're embedded in a residential neighborhood is truly awe-inspiring for me. It's, it's easy to get caught up in, I'll, I'll say relatively minor annoyances. I know that there may be disagreeable, there may be disagreement among those living closest, the residential neighbors living closest to Cottage at various times when there's been disruption and noise and some traffic, et cetera, but on the whole, as a community, I think it's really remarkable how diligent, how professional the management team has been to ensure to the greatest extent possible that things are contained on the property, respect for the neighborhood, et cetera. So I want to once again commend you for that. I can't even imagine how challenging this must be. I was going to say must have been, but it still isn't processed. And I, lastly, I would like to say that I appreciate the robustness of this report because it also reflects, I think, your commitment, your seriousness in because it also reflects, I think, your commitment, your seriousness in the agreements that you've struck with the city. I mean, going back to 2005 with the Planning Commission approval, you've not cut corners in, I think, being quite honorable and diligent in what, in the expectations and in being the best neighbor you can, and I think that's reflected year after year in both the documentation you've provided, as well as you yourself being here. I want to thank you for that. Sometimes other members of a team are dispatched to the city to be the messenger when they feel that, that a very senior member of the team isn't warranted, and that sends a message to me as to commitment and seriousness and professionalism. So I want to personally thank you, Mr. Viscaro, for you being the one, along with other senior members of your team, year after year coming.
Thank you, Commissioner Schwartz.
So I think I'll just close with that, not to, you know, spend too much more time, especially with what you have ahead of you still, and I certainly hope that you feel that our city and all of the representatives from our city have worked with you responsively, professionally, and appreciatively. It sounds like that has been the case, so I'm very proud of that, being a planning commissioner, and thank you again. It's great to see you and the whole team here today. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Commissioner Schwartz. Commissioner Jordan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll just echo, as she and I both have done every year, our admiration and thanks for this, too. I think when we do the math, those of us that have been here since 2010, we have now seen more than, just one more than half of your annual presentations since it started in 2002. The, I'm grateful to hear, I'm happy to hear that you had no complaints on helicopter landings. I'm still a little dismayed that, you know, that might come up and you have a slide ready. This community's not big enough to have many degrees of separation between somebody you know or somebody in your family that's particularly a trauma patient that's going to have their lives saved because of that landing, and it's, I'm great, happy to know maybe that message has finally got across, and hopefully you won't bring that slide for too many more years. And we're also, again, as I say every year, we're blessed not just to have a, as a result of this effort, have a world-class medical organization right here in the city, but in fact, it's a regional multi-location operation for the entire region, and you guys, you guys have represented the construction process well. You've put out a good product, and as Commissioner Schwartz says, you have done this honestly and transparently, and it's been a great pleasure to work with you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Jordan. Commissioner Campanella?
Thank you, and thank you both for coming today. Really appreciate the fact that the hospital stayed operating through this whole process, and I guess sometimes people think, "Well, wouldn't it have been easier just to, on a, projects such as, just to tear everything down and start over again?" You know, it would have gone faster, but you may have saved some money on the inflation and costs, especially over the last six, seven years, but at the same time, you wouldn't have had any lessons learned, except one big one, perhaps, when you got to the end of the job. So I think it's a balancing act, but the social and community benefit of staying operating and caring for the patients far outweighs any dollars that may have been saved along the way. So very appreciative of that, and the fact that you're going back and taking care of the existing buildings for earthquake resistance as much as possible, because that only, not only protects those buildings, but protects the rest of your buildings as well, depending on the shaker that might take place. So echoing the professionalism that you had in the way you report to us, and look forward to the last session. I guess it goes a couple of years beyond the construction, but look forward to the Planning Commission hearing, the, at least the end of the construction work, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Campanella.
Thank you, Commissioner Campanella. I don't see any other lights on. I echo my fellow commissioners' appreciation for your coming here and giving the reports and being so thorough. I did have one question. I think you mentioned you're going to have a public meeting in two weeks.
Yes, on July 23rd.
Is it, is it with respect to anticipation of the seismic upgrades, or?
Actually, it's, we're required to have two meetings a year, and since our major construction stopped towards the latter part of, like, September of last year, we cut that back a little bit. We only met three times last year, so our intention this year is to meet twice to meet the requirement, and we felt we should just do that in advance of the next project. And so the internal remodels are really not noticeable, but the external one will start essentially by September, so we're giving plenty of notice. We send out our cards. There are little postcards that we send out to the mailing list every year, a couple weeks in advance. We get a few reservations, and if we have lots of people come, that's great, and only a few, that's fine, too. So we have the meeting regardless, and we'll probably have another one in three or four months, just to see, after the construction starts, see what kind of feedback we're getting. We'll probably have one in October, and maybe again in January, just to sort of pick up a little bit of that feedback as it comes along, to see what kind of stuff we're getting from the neighbors.
Okay, yeah, because I think managing the expectations in terms of noise on the seismic upgrades might be important, and you've really done a great job being a good neighbor to the neighborhood. That's pretty clear. I've, this is my third year on the commission, but, you know, I've seen the numbers decrease every year, no complaints, and I'm going through the packets and, well, two, only two people showed up for the neighborhood meeting, and there's, no one's calling the hotline, so you're obviously being very good neighbors and doing the right thing, and you have a marvelous facility.
Thank you.
Absolutely, and a marvelous staff. I can attest to that personally, so they're really wonderful. So I, and I want to commend you on your recycling. I think that that is, that in itself is a very expensive effort, you know, particularly when it comes to asphalt and other building materials, concrete, so it's, it's, it's just, it's great that you are recycling or diverting 95%, over 95%. That's just an astounding number, so congratulations on that, and thank you for the very thorough report, and we'll look forward to seeing you next year and hearing about your progress.
Great, thanks very much.
So, thank you, Mr. Viscaro. Thank you, Mr. Gomez, for coming, yes.
Thank you, everybody.
And Ms. Bedard, thank you, too. Yeah. Okay. That concludes Item 3B, and we're moving on to Item 4, which is Administrative Agenda, Committee and Liaison Reports, Staff Hearing Officer Liaison Report.
Nothing out of the ordinary to report.
Okay, thank you. And Other Committee and Liaison Reports. Does anyone have anything? Commissioner Campanella?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We spoke after the review that we had for comments on 219 East Haley, for comments back to the ABR, and we saw those in our minutes today. Ms. Ostringer has arranged, per our request, that when this comes back to the ABR agenda, as liaison, I'm going to attend and maybe go through our findings and, you know, answer or respond to any questions that the ABR may have, and I look forward to that, answer questions on the spot, and what our thought process may have been, and the conclusions that we came to.
So you're saying you're going to represent the Planning Commission at the ABR?
As liaison, yeah, going through and.
Thank you.
And I think that's kind of, for any of the boards, it might be important just to be there to explain and convey and see reactions. You know, that would help us maybe better communicate the next time if we see how things are taken or can be better explained. And, let's see, not liaison, but next Tuesday, before City Council, would be the, perhaps the final discussion on inclusionary ordinance. That's next week. One small change that had to be noticed. The changes to the multi-unit housing program that Jessica Metzger is running, that'll take place on the 17th next week. And for those who did not attend the first session, this is the second of two workshop sessions, the comments that were made at the first session on April 24th are being accumulated, categorized, and they'll be discussed at this meeting. There will also be time for public comment, and I believe this will be the last of two minutes before taking these comments and suggestions from the public back through the process to see how amendments will be handled, and I guess we will be seeing them sometime in the next couple of months when all the information is being put together. If you have not done so, those who are interested in the subject are going to attend the meeting. I suggest you go to the AUD website, and you could just type in City of Santa Barbara AUD, and Ms. Metzger and staff have done a lot of expansive work on what's there, including more detailing, explanations, also references to various policies and practices that have been done relative to parking and other issues that are going to be discussed, that have evolved in other communities as well. So there's a lot more information to see. Might be good to look at it before you attend the meeting.
And you might, Commissioner Campanella, would you please remind people of when and where the meeting is, please?
The meeting is July, sorry, July 17th at the Faulkner Gallery at 6 o'clock, and that'll be next week, July 17th.
Great.
Okay, it'll be about an hour and a half meeting.
Yeah, it goes 6:00 to 7:30 is the posted time. Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, one more.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, last night, three of us, Commissioner Schwartz, Jordan, and myself, attended World Business Academy session on Housing Solutions for Vibrant Santa Barbara. This was a matching piece to transportation session that they had previously, and they're trying to, they say the two intertwined, which it does, and it's leading to its sustainability that they really want to enhance. So they had a four-person panel, Councilman Dominguez, Rob Fredericks, Lucrezia De Leon, who's with RRM Design Group, has also been involved in homeless and senior housing issues, and then Matt Turner, who's a local advocate for younger people participating and supporting nonprofit activities and social work. And they had a pretty good turnout, and I think it was a broad discussion, and with the idea of how to implement and get more housing in the downtown area, especially those that people can afford, both for the young people that were there, Housing Authority, and for policymakers. So I think that's a pretty good session, and then we'll see some more coming up with Jessica's session, and then in a couple of weeks, what'll be the Cosmont Report, I guess, will be coming before the City Council. So this topic is getting a lot of attention right now, which it should.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. That's great. I don't see any other lights on. I just want to say, I went, I attended the Downtown Parking Committee meeting this morning, and one of the key elements of the five-year strategic financial plan is the implementation of parking technologies that could generate revenue. So we actually had a presentation, the committee had a presentation on, in the short term, what this means, in the mid-range, what it means, and in the long-term, what it means, and there was quite a bit of discussion on license plate recognition, which is new enforcement technology, curb management technology, and parking access and revenue control system. So LPR is the acronym, and it was a pretty interesting presentation, and also a report on the use and development of the mobile payment devices, which continue to grow in popularity. So I think over time, we will see some changes in parking management downtown and also curb management practices also. So it was pretty interesting, and there is a staff report on it if you want a summary of some of the new technologies. And that's all I have. With that, our meeting is adjourned, and thank you all.